Hey, I'm Andrew Fenney, last week at the parade. And he was in the city council of the coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. I'm now going to call into session the joint meeting of the Norfolk County Commission and the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Board of Trustees for Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. I'm going to read the open meeting law and the ability and the law we get relative to our Zoom of this meeting. We are live and in person, and of course, we have the Zoom option. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law. Mass General Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by accident legislature, the auto was extended until April 1st, 2021, I'm going to ask everyone to stand.
2022.
2022, I'm sorry. Ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag. To the flag. The United States of America. To the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to call a meeting, I'm going to call the role of the commissioners and then Chairman Little will call the role of the agricultural school board of trustees. As I said at the outset, this was posted as a joint meeting because the first item of business today is going to be a meeting with the managers at the agricultural school relative to the recent report that the county has commissioned. Commissioner Stady.
President.
Commissioner Collins.
President.
And Commissioner Shea, we have a quorum. Ed, if you could read your role, would you be ready to go?
Uh, Peter Collins.
President.
Joe Shea.
President.
Dick Stady.
President.
Liz Smith.
Present.
And myself.
We have a quorum, that's good. Okay, as I said, uh, at the outset, this is our regularly scheduled meeting and a joint meeting with the folks from the agricultural school. The purpose of the, uh, agricultural school being here is a joint discussion relative to the Abraham's Abraham's group recommendations for Norfolk County High School, which we've provided to everyone. This is the fourth, I think, department that's been before us, it's at least the third. As you know, we spent $75,000 last year having this be this study done. We're now going to meeting with the departments, we've distributed it, it went out in September. We're meeting with the departments. We're going to continue to meet if it's needed, we're going to continue to get feedback, we're going to report to our advisory board, and I think you're going to see whatever comes out of this report will be somehow wrapped up and begun in the 2023 budget. So that is our priority as far as time goes, but everything's open to discussion. So having said all that, um, I'm going to open it up. I will say that when the school portion of today's meeting is over, we have a regularly scheduled meeting, which we'll get right to, but we want to be able to have the folks from the school not have to sit through all of that, of course, they're welcome to. I don't think so. So, um, I don't know who wants to start, but again, without repeating myself, you have sent your comments to the commissioners, it's in their packet, um, anything and everything. Uh, we have received written response for which I thank you, and I don't know who wants to start out, but maybe we'll talk to Superintendent first, John Martin. Um, and how do you want to approach this, John? The areas of interest are all areas, we stayed away, I should say, the Abraham's people stayed away from academics as such. We're concentrating on maintenance, food service, and one or two other items. And, uh, I think that's more than fair, we, I don't think we were ready to delve into anything else.
Yeah, okay, can I jump in? Absolutely, any, thank you. So I said this to the different departments that have come before us, and, um, we're always trying to be better government, and this isn't singling out the Aggie School or any one department that's come before us. Uh, we took on this evaluation by the Abraham's Group to see if we could do things, um, more cost effectively, maybe streamline some things. We're not out to get, uh, any department, any individual, we're not, that isn't our goal, our goal is to just try to make this all work within our budget. And, um, so with that in mind, there, I, there may be some things within the Abraham's report that you say, geez, no, that doesn't work for us, and this is the reason why it really doesn't work. But there may be some things that do work. So, um, I know that much of the response, um, kind of focuses on all that, but if there are things that that do work, or you you think you have some ideas to help make it work, maybe if you can follow up with, uh, John Cronin, the county administrator. So it's, it's nice to say, okay, there are 10 things here, these three things or these four things we can do. But the other ones, we have to tweak this, this, this won't really fit. So we're trying to be proactive and we're trying to make this a positive experience. This isn't a calling out of anyone, uh, at the school or any department. We're just trying to have a better project product for all of our cities and towns. Understood, thank you.
Okay, also suggestions, Chairman, in the interest of time, we have a long agenda, we don't want to shut you, cut you short, but we have your responses, but soon we've read them. Could we maybe just summarize, I'd appreciate, give me a summary of what you think on food and a summary of maintenance and allow time for questions we may have. Would that be appropriate that way? I mean, if you gave, I thought you did a great job, whoever did these did an excellent job in terms of appearing responses. There's no need to go through each one unless you want to, but I'd be, I'd appreciate maybe a little summary of where you think how food services looks, where it's going, you know, more or less, and then we'll take up maintenance with the chairman's permission, of course, and then we can fire some questions.
Sure, any way you want to do it. Food service is comfortable, but John, let's.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's great. First of all, let me, before we start, there's a lot of good stuff in this report, and I do appreciate you guys doing this and expanding some of the county resources on this report. It has a ton of information in here that I think is going to help us run the school, you know, from a benchmarking standpoint. And these guys accumulated a lot of information, which I think, uh, you know, is really going to help us going forward. So I, I do want to, before I start, say that I think this is a real worthwhile, there's a lot of worthwhile information in here, no matter how we feel, uh, as Commissioner pointed out about any individual recommendation, there's no question that there was effort put into this, and there's no question there was understanding of our business and our school, and there was some, and there, and there's a lot of data in there that I think that we can use, you know, to run the school going forward. So I want to, I want to thank you before we answer the first part. Overview of the, um, food program is that prior to, uh, COVID-19 pandemic, it wasn't a particularly thriving and healthy food program. If you look at the statistics that were suggested by the Abraham's Group, which I, which I think we're, we're fine, you know, participation rates specifically, and meals per labor hour, those were both, I think, really good, relevant statistics. Uh, we weren't really in the particularly healthy category, I, I did send around where we were. Just for clarification, the FY20 is pre-pandemic FY20. So it's the first part of the year before everything changed, right? Because it's not really, uh, relevant to look at the food program, uh, now, now, or even at the end of FY20.
Is that why fiscal 2021 is missing?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's a, that's a good question, that's a good question, yeah, that's why we did it in 21, 21 is so, but not representative of, of the real world, so we, we didn't do that. Um, so where we are now is quite a bit different when, than when the Abraham's, uh, group looked at the food program because of the pandemic, and specifically now we're in a kind of a golden area, area, era for the food service, because you have free food for everybody, breakfast and lunch, yet we're being reimbursed by the federal government for every breakfast and lunch that we serve. So, uh, right now, we're in, we're, we're in a golden period where our food service program is, is really looking good. Because we've, if, if you look at these statistics here, we're serving about twice as many meals currently as we did in, in prior years, the combination of breakfast and lunch. And we're actually getting reimbursed at a higher rate than when we sell lunches. Because our lunch reimbursement, our lunch sales price, which is in this report, is $3.50, and our current reimbursement from the federal government is $4.35 for every lunch. So, uh, we are, uh, you know, uh, coincidentally, not through, through, through no effort of our own, we, we have a healthy lunch program going right now, one that the Abraham's Group would have been proud of, but we are going, we're, we're trying to think of where we're going to be when this ends, because we do believe that the full reimbursement of breakfast and lunch is going to end. And, and, and so the answer to the summary of where, what, what we think we're going to do going forward is, we do know we have to do better in our lunch program. We have to, I think, probably reduce our staffing a little bit, you know, probably on the part-time side, not on the full-time side, where we only have two employees that are full-time in the lunch program. And we have to increase our participation, you know, through advertisement, through feedback. Um, the, the, the other big thing that I want to address is this idea that we could in some way outsource our food service program, because it was suggested that we either use Walpole or Walpole's food service provider, uh, Chartwells. We really feel strongly that, 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 that food program is at the core of an agricultural school, and the tie-ins are many between the, the abundance garden, between recycling, composting, and other things that we can, you know, integrate into the educational component of the school. We really feel strongly that we'd like to give it a try, continuing to be an internal program and just trying to tidy up the internal program, you know, improve the internal program statistics, rather than, uh, go down the path of outsourcing the program, um, to a, a different service provider. I've been in a situation in a private school, in a prior school where we both outsourced the program and did it ourselves. So I know many differences in control that you have when you, uh, do the program yourself. And I, and I, and we believe in school management, we believe strongly that we should keep this program and just try to improve it, you know, spend some time trying to make it a better program than it was back in 2019 and 18 before the pandemic. And, and frankly, we, we've discussed all of these things with the, with the people in charge of those individual functions, in case the food service director, and he believes that he's going to be able to make strides during the pandemic when everybody is eating, like when he's literally serving twice as many meals as he had been, that he thinks will help him post pandemic. You know, he's going to learn things, he's going to introduce kids to different foods, he's got, has more people participating in his product, obviously, than he does normally, and he feels like he can keep some of those, you know, to increase participation on the other side. You want to ask questions about the food program, or do you want to talk about?
No, as we go, we want to ask questions.
Okay.
I just hadn't, and I think you touched on it, I was looking at, and I Donald, I figured out that this face went up because of the, the federal program.
Yeah, yeah.
It's nice to see it up, but what, what, you, you, you think it'll end?
Yeah, you know.
A lot of federal programs never end, you know, for good and bad.
It's interesting, because when I talked to the food service director, he said that he'd already gotten some feedback that it was going to continue. Uh, into, I, I'm assuming he was thinking of FY23, because we know it's going to continue for FY22.
If it didn't continue, um, do you think the, by more people using it, they'll get used to it, it will help us in the long run?
That's, that's the food service director's belief.
I assume.
Yeah, yeah, the goal is to get higher participation, because a participation rate of 33% is in, is not, doesn't speak positively about the program, given that the targets are 50, 55% of participation.
And I know it isn't touched on in here, and I'm not sure that they're talking about the custodial function, which I, I want to talk about later. That building is not exactly our most favorite building. I know that it's functional because it addition to the cafeteria, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
And what's the library upstairs? Um, I, I know Commissioner Collins uses the library on occasion when he's waiting for a meeting, I did wander up there and walk through one time. If you would have, if you were to get a hundred million dollars from someone next week, would we, where would you put replacing that building, John? Is that?
It's so ironic you brought that up, it was a topic of conversation that had our media.
The hundred million dollars at the building?
Yeah, the hundred million dollars.
Yeah, well, I
It would be at the very top of the list.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
That's clear. Okay, I, I still, and today we're going to give some, some checks out from first, uh, after funds. We're excited about that, but all that I see and all that I read, which is new, I can't believe at the end of the rainbow, or maybe halfway through the rainbow, that we aren't going to be able to, uh, get some of this money for our school, and I, you know, we want to be ahead of the curve, and I know we, we generally could know where to put it very quickly, but there's always something.
Sure.
And, you know, since we're talking about cafeteria, it's not large enough, or it's just outmoded, or it's certainly clean enough and everything, but it's all. I mean, but we can't accommodate everyone at one sitting or something, or we don't want to talk about that.
There, there's enough room to accommodate, as you said, at any given lunch. But I think what, what we would look at, if we were to throw good money after that, we would need a new roof, we would want to, uh, upgrade and enhance the kitchen itself, make it more modern, um, and make it a more attractive space. And the second floor, which is labeled, um, as, as a media center, is not really a media center.
I agree, okay.
In the 21st century, uh, so we, you know, we, we would have a lot of work to do there as well.
But the building itself, if we're going to just talk about the building, which isn't the subject of today, but you're presupposing continuing to serve lunches to the student body. If you were going to outsource it, or if the boy made a decision in a few years to outsource, let's say they did, you wouldn't need all that functionality you have in the kitchen, because you might just need a rewarm place, which means you'd have space inside that could be added for people to sit in, which would increase your capacity. So I think that's a big thing to look at, I think first we have to, don't put the cock before the horse, we have to figure out, is this program viable? All right, even if you got a new building, a hundred million dollars and a genie came down here, you're not going to get the building tomorrow. I'd like to focus on what we're doing right now, I had a couple of questions on how are you going to address that? I mean, building would be great, but you're assuming that we're going to keep the program or not. Your prior administration, uh, administrator said to take a good look at outsourcing. He had said, maybe we should look at outsourcing, just a thought, not contradicting what you said. I think these responses are well thought out and very careful, and I appreciate it. But I had two specific questions. So one is on, um, on the response to FS5, which says a school significantly reduced the labor costs, and, uh, they have some figures that the Abraham Report quoted, but you said the Abraham Group did not take in, uh, the benefits. What are you talking about there?
I'm just talking about the chart that they had in the middle of their, uh, report, where they have a line for, for, uh, labor, and then they have a line for benefits. And if you just combine those two numbers, the labor and the benefits number, they're actually a little bit closer than.
Okay, so there was a, there was perhaps a glitch in it, they didn't factor that in.
Yeah, I think so, I believe so, yeah.
All right, so you want to level the playing field and make it look, I'm just checking, you know, just going to help us. Okay, that's why I want to make sure. The other thing is, I'm, I'm much into this, I think it'd be great for you as superintendent to take, believe in it, get student input. You talk about having student input on the menu, certainly, if the students like the menu, you know, you know, I know back in the day, there were certain, pizza day was always a popular day, it still is, you know what I mean, and cookie day and this and that, all sorts of days people like, but how would you go about facilitating that? What are your thoughts on that? It's great to say, get student input, what would you do? Would you rely on student council, or would you have a, a group set up, or a task force, or even how are you going to tackle that?
I mean, ideally, there are two, there are, nowadays, we would try to go directly to individual students. We would try to put something in the cafeteria where you could vote there, either manually or electronically, something like that. And of course, there's voting that takes place, you know, by purchasing, right? So we have to pay attention to what, what days we're serving a lot of lunches and what days we're not. It doesn't work now because everybody gets it for free, so you don't really have a lot of varieties, but when it gets back to paying, yeah, we, this is what I did in my last school, is, you know, we would, we would analyze the volume every day, and then we'd just say, we're not serving smoothies anymore, because there's, there are not enough, you know.
The menu is on the web, right? You put it on the web, I know that. And is there also a separate old-school mailing that goes to parents or guardians saying, here's the menu for the month? You know, you have a little sheet that says, here's the menu for the month?
No.
Just to get an idea of. Just the website, no old-fashioned.
No old-fashioned US quotes, no.
But you still, you do mail some things, don't you, the parents? It's just a thought, you might want to think about including that, just a thought. You know, some schools do it, they've sent out the menu, and now we, parents can look at it, you know, it's, the more you can hit it with ideas, the better. But I like, I, I want to commend you on your ways that you want to expand it by grants, you know, education, working with the students, advertising, those are all, they're all good, you know. I wish you luck, and it sounds like you want to keep it the way it is. You don't want to outsource, you want to give it a go and give it a good trick, but we're looking at it, that's something we have to look at, that's all, keep, you know, I have to be carefully examining it, that's all.
If you look at the response under FS6, I think that hits to the heart of the core of what we see in the future, which is really integrating the farm effort, the garden effort, uh, with what goes on in the cafeteria on a more regular and consistent basis. I like pizza as much as the next guy.
Right.
Given my druthers, I need it five out of seven nights a week, but I know it's not a good idea. So, you know, it's our, it's our goal as responsible adults to, to take the input from the kids and say, yeah, we, we want, we want to be able to serve pizza as often as we can, but at the same time, kale's good for you, so have you ever tried it? And, and have those conversations as well.
Not a fan, but I know it's good.
You say kale?
What a good question, great question.
We can put kale on a pizza.
Throw it on it, I'll take it, show you, I'll take anything, you know, my kids don't like it, but that's all for me. Do we have a culinary arts program at the school? I'm just thinking, where the kids grow, could they make something, or we don't?
A lot of folk schools do.
Yeah, something, maybe something to think about, maybe, maybe. Like even a minor or minor elective, that way you, you can see the actual, to see the actual result of planting something and growing it, and then making it to something, maybe, you know, just something to think about, that's all. As you go through your curriculum, looking ahead, you know, that's all.
That's, that's what UMass Amherst did, uh, they have a really big program, their lunches are like, their, their meals are especially the best in the, in the US. But they, they have the kids working in the caf, and, and they, the kids are involved, like, every step of the way, and they help to choose all different exotic type of food that they have all the time. It's kind of.
I mean, Blue Hills has one, but that's at the district vocational school. Blue Hills has a, has a Chateau de Blur, right? You go, you're, you're a meal, and they make it, the kids make it, it's great, but that's just, that's only having a food service.
Any questions, Commissioner, about food service? Any more Johns, Johns, can we talk about food service? Again, we're going to take it back in and get back to you, or take it along, and then, um, okay, how about maintenance?
All right, maintenance is, uh, a little more, there's a little more meat to the maintenance suggestion, but the summary is, uh, we, we certainly looked at all the statistics, we certainly took to heart the statistics, particularly the agricultural schools, which I think are most relevant, particularly in maintenance and groundskeeping. There are real differences between an agricultural school and a vocational school. So, you know, it's a limited sample size, there are three other schools, two of which have differences to us, right? So they're, they're really hard to get direct comparisons, but, but the weight, the weight of all of the numbers suggests that we, we are pretty, pretty well-staffed on the agricultural, on the maintenance, uh, side, and we're going to, uh, address that. Um, but if I take a step back, we, we certainly turned it over in our heads, the idea of combining the maintenance group with the, with the one of the county. We do believe that there are a lot of unique, uh, attributes to a school that make that sort of combination complicated. I mean, I was here when, and John McGowan was here, and, and I heard how he felt about the combination, and he certainly pointed out that the union versus non-union aspect of it, but I pointed out, or we pointed out a few more things here that are, you know, sort of school-specific, you know, particularly animals, and, and the fact that, that, that our grounds are a little different than maintaining a court, a courthouse lawn. So, so we really don't think that's in the best interests of the county, you know, for, for that combination to take place. I mean, uh, we're thinking about ourselves, of course, as a school, but we're trying to think more broadly too, and we just don't think that that, e- even though on paper, you know, this is where the Abraham's guys, you know, they, they got a lot of things logically correct. Some things, I think they didn't quite get the, the feeling for the school and how different a school is from other places. Um, so I, I just don't think that that combination is, is going to work, or we don't think that the combination is going to work. But we have taken a look at our own staffing, I think their suggestion that says, you, you know, you might classify a person in your EPIMS as a, as a, as an administrator, as an educational assistant, or as a teaching assistant, I think that's a great point. They pointed out that the other agricultural schools all had done that, and we hadn't done that. So we can look into that, that's, that's addressed here, but I think in, in general, we feel like we, we, we're ready to make some, you know, serious uh, thoughts about reducing the staff of that group, you know, we've given a look at the farm staff, we've given a look at the general maintenance and groundskeeping staff. We, we, we object, we, you know, we've, we've pulled apart people with specific jobs there, like the mechanic and the groundskeeper who have unique skills, that would be, would be a little harder to redistribute that work to somebody else in the group, because they have training and skills that are unique. And so we are suggesting that we will, you know, find a reduction in the next, uh, period of time, hopefully through attrition for, for one person on the maintenance, uh, staff, and then the same for, with one person on the farm staff. So we're going to say, we don't think combination makes sense, but we do think a reduction in, in, in the staffing makes sense, given, given all of the statistics that are put out there in this Abraham's report.
Except in the area of plumbing and some specialty things, you did suggest you were open to that.
Of course.
You were open to that.
Yeah, but it would have to be based on the availability and willingness of the county guys to, to work, to work down there at the school. I mean, they had, if you remember their statistics that John McGowan presented, there, there were overtime. Some of those guys had, had put in for overtime, so I'm not sure what capacity they have to work at the school, but we'd be glad to try, start with them when we had those kinds of needs that made sense, and it could be that they, they could be scheduled if they were more maintenance stuff. You know what I mean? If it was like cleaning out the grease traps or something like that, that, in that case, you could reach out to the county and sort of schedule that, and tell them sometime in December, we need you guys to come down and clean out our, our grease traps.
Okay.
I've spent a little time on this, not only on the school side, if, if you had an electrical problem tonight, who would respond?
We have a, well, it would go first through facilities, which is Pete Murphy, and then he would contact the, I don't remember the guy's name, the electrician.
Life body.
Life body.
Yeah.
And we have someone, and it's like an ongoing contract, same as we do here, but you don't have the same person we do. We have a company in debt, I might forget the name, we just renewed.
Right. I can't remember.
But we also have an electrician in a.
We do, during business hours, yep.
Okay, which is over, okay, all right. I, I like your answer on that, I think it, it's a good place to start.
Yeah.
These are the unique positions, certainly, farm manager, what, what is the gentleman who just retired after like 50 years at the school? It's his 47, what was his title?
He was a hay forerunner.
I don't believe that we have anyone on our staff over here, with all due respect, or in the treasurer's office that's a hay forerunner.
That was another different title.
That's a great, something else.
Well, I do want to try.
If you saw what the guy did and how long he'd been there, I mean, I mean, I realize the uniqueness, and I suppose, and I didn't ask Abraham's particularly, Abraham, but his person there that had been a school manager somewhere, or what was he, a, uh, business manager, or something, but he seemed very knowledgeable with something, but he knew the uniqueness of an agricultural school. He, he did take that into consideration.
Again, you know, we have, um, we have some sick ferrets at the moment. To use the same vernacular, it's a particular skill set that you need in order to attend to those sorts of things on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, that you're not going to get with your average, somebody who doesn't know anything about it.
No, I, I don't know, I don't think that's a, the subject, or I say that, I mean, just as academically we chose not.
But you men, but you mentioned though, if I can interpret politely, you mentioned that you might consider some of those people custodians as educational assistants, am I right?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, what's, what's the, explain to me as a new commissioner, what's the advantage in doing that? Why? Why do we, what do we gain by just saying, well, now, gave you a job, we're going to call you this, that, or that? What, do we save money, or we get reimbursed? Is it reimbursable?
No, that's not a financial, that wouldn't be a financial change, that would be an accuracy and reporting change that makes us, uh, look appropriate and accurate to the outside world who looks at our EPIMS statistics and says, this is so many maintenance guys. So Abraham's in there, admits that that's not going to save any money by calling somebody a classroom person.
Because the fact that some of these people, as opposed to our maintenance staff with John McGowan, and no disrespect, they're helping out with the animals, right? It's a special skill.
Get in the classrooms.
Right, in the classroom, right, right? Like good dog grooming and things like that, right?
Right, they're often nice.
I'm talking strictly custodial.
Yeah, right, so there is a difference, and so it's the same, it makes a point that it's not that easy to say, put them all together and merge it. You're, the public has to understand that, I have to understand that, and I'm getting it now. You can't just say, well, let's pool all the resources, because that's a special skill, you know?
I think it's, I think it's a very, very special skill on, on the farming of the hay, just the throwing the hay. It, it, it's, you know, we, we lost a guy with 46 years.
Yeah.
Unbelievable. And I don't care what anybody, anybody in this room will say, it's going to be a hard time to fit, to fit that bill of that guy.
Let's imagine.
You know what I mean? Because for a couple of reasons, there's not those, that type of farmers anymore.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's a.
Would that be something, Ed, if I may, that you may have to do maybe a couple of part-time people? Because there might be, there are still farmers in the area, you know, in the area, they may want, look at it as an attractive little side thing, and they might do a part-time.
I, I, I don't think I'd want to go part-time with it.
Yeah.
But I think that I would get a person that could do a couple of things.
I see.
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
The, you don't, you don't, don't cut, you don't grow hay in the wintertime.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I thought, you know, but, yeah. So it's something, this person had to have done something else, you know, and you know better than me.
And, and they have to know how to breed the cows, you know, the artificial. And they have to know how to breed the cows, you know, they artificially breed them and stuff like that, you know? So it isn't a, it isn't a guy that we advertise, we're looking for farm here. You know, we, you could have a specialty to be able to do it.
Do we, do we keep all our hay or we sell it? We use it all?
We use it.
Good job.
Any other questions, well, we have the team assembled here, anything about the school? I mean, no, I mean, no. I don't wanna open Pandora's box, but.
Excellent, the responses are well carefully written and.
Okay, well, we're gonna digest this and we'll go back to you, of course.
Yeah, if you could.
The budget process is starting. John, so we'll.
If you could follow with John Cronin with the products that you like and you think you can work together, that'd be really. And then, you know, just as I said at the beginning, we understand the idea is a unique place, it's really a cool place and one of the beautiful parts of, of being in county government. But anything we can do to to make it more efficient would be great.
Understood.
Okay, last call, anything else?
Something I'd say, anything else you wanna add that you can, like Peter said, just, you can write a summary and put some things that we didn't cover maybe, or should be covering, but I think you hit the nail on the head, you know, nice job.
And John Wallace did the lion's share in this, we collaborated on it, but John, it was John's baby. I like the way John put it too, I mean, okay, this is, this is, this is how we'd like to start and we'll see how that works and then we can run from there.
Yeah.
You know, so that was, that was a nice way that you put that.
Yeah, and I appreciate those moments too, you understand some of this. It's meaningful, you know, it's not just some people haven't taken that out, it's good that you do.
But I think honestly, Mr. Chairman, the point I'm getting here from this group here is they recognize what the Abraham's report was trying to do. They're not saying they know it all, they're just saying, they're looking at it, give time for us to look at it and take, take a good look and agree, disagree, fine, you know, it's just good to look at it, right? And that's how you make improvements, so, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
We're gonna move right along because we have a.
You're off the hook.
Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you. Kale on pizza, I'm gonna try that.
Kale pizza, yeah.
Kale pizza.
Come to my house Friday.
No, we're not journeying.
Any going out to Sharon?
I don't know. Talk to you soon.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Nice job.
I'll buy you one. Actually, why don't you adjourn the trustee's meeting? Right?
All right.
I'll make the motion to adjourn, adjourn the trustee's meeting.
I'll say. Commissioners are gonna stay.
Hey Liz, that was easy.
I know, right?
Don't make so much noise, will you, all right? Keep that dog quiet, keep that dog quiet.
That's why there's a mute button.
Get some eggs and get cooking.
Take care.
Take care. I know he knows that family, I don't know if that's the reason, but I know he knows them very well.
Are you here for money? I knew it, I knew it.
All right.
Zero, they're all showing up now. Bye, Ed. Take care, Mr. Chairman. Wellesley? I don't know, I bet you, I haven't met you.
We have it. Cheryl Struthers, finance director.
Oh, wow, pleasure.
Yeah, Megan usually comes.
Okay, I'm just saving the new commissioners. Do you know Randy? You know Randy?
Scollins, I know the name.
How are you, everything all right?
How are you? They're all coming in for money.
And Mike Zulis.
Hey Mike.
See, I recognize you. I was at one of my functions the other night.
They're moving us around.
Okay.
I think we're gonna do a couple of pictures. Where do you want us all to be?
Well, we're gonna sit down for a minute and then we'll do this and then.
Oakland.
Taking a picture or not? Everyone wants to stand. All right, I'll explain, I'm gonna have you explain them both. All right, we're gonna go to number eight.
Nice to meet you.
Mike Zulis.
Dick Shady, new commission. Nice to meet you, welcome aboard, get the money.
We'll get you out of here fast.
Hi guys.
If you come every week, you'll get a check, if you come every week, you'll have a check. We'll take you see, we'll explain and then we'll take a picture, all right?
You should do the picture before you get back on right now.
Treasure of a lot of you. Thank you.
This is fun pilot job.
We're back on the record at our regularly scheduled December first meeting, without objection. We're gonna move to item number eight, which is our Opera Grant Awards for the town of Wellesley and the town of Milton. And as a way of kicking this off, for the last eight or nine months, we've been talking about opera. The enormity of it, we didn't know anything about it, now we probably know more than we wanted to know, but we're learning every day. And we've assembled a team that we're gonna stick with, Director Cronin, Treasurer Bellotti, and the Commissioners. We have a great outside accounting firm, actually we have two accounting firms, and we have a great law firm, Mintz. And we're collaborating with the county of Plymouth, Bristol, and Bonstable in the mechanics of how this is being done. The good news, the best news, we are the first county in Massachusetts, but also the first ones to be giving out a check, that's always good news. I jokingly said, if you come every week, we'll give you a check. Then we'll have 30 people here, we don't, but it is what it is, the original the original comments we were getting from managers and finance people and selectmen were, calm down now. And I did speak, there's been a lot of conversations with Mr. Dunne about it, he understood it, and now it seems that more and more people are understanding it. We're excited, we got two more right behind you, Dover and Bellingham.
Uh, one more.
One more? Dover or Bellingham? Dover is right behind you, so they're excited and we're excited, but it's new. We certainly never did anything like this before, he is most senior man, but we think, we think that, again, as I said at the outset, that we manage, manage this in a way that it's gonna work for everyone. It's probably a five or six year commitment. Every time I pick up the paper, we see, not that we're doing something differently, I mean, the state paid our money too. As you heard my comments, if you were here, we're dying to get some, we'd like to take, we wanna pass all this money through to the towns. We can't believe in the enormity of it, that we can't take a little, one of these to help out like our school, which until, which in the end helps the cities and towns, or if we could take a little to fix some of these corridors, which helps cities and towns because in the end, they're paying, they're paying a great aim, but that's way down the line. Our first priority is get this money through the, the system, the bureaucracy of it, but I'm pleasantly surprised, and that's a credit to John and Billy, our assistant director and everyone here and the team we put together, because what is our accounting firm?
Cliff and Larson Allen.
And Cliff and Larson and Allen.
COA.
They came up with a model that we use everywhere, the portal, everything. And we have a backup to them.
I was in Sullivan.
I was in Sullivan. And then Mintz is our law firm, so that we don't get a call from Uncle Sam in five or six years, we're gonna pay this money back or etc. But I'm gonna turn that call over. We're not gonna, we're not.
We'll come to you, Mike.
We're not gonna get a call like that, we hope. So the newness is exciting and you are the first, and we're gonna give you the checks, I think we mailed Wellesley already, right?
We did not.
You didn't?
I'm hiring it.
Oh, I was mailing.
Could I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we turn this over to Director Cronin.
Your agenda today, I believe, calls for the topic that Chairman Shaye just mentioned to be ordered at number eight. So if the Commissioners are inclined to take that item out of order, we can begin the process of bringing, bringing forward these awards.
Okay. You have those, the amounts, and then I'll just take a motion again, because we don't give money out every day, I don't think we're gonna give any money out till today, so. In addition to being exciting, it's brand new.
So does the Commission need to take a vote to move?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if it pleases you, that we take item number eight out of order for the purpose of awarding money, opera money to the town of Wellesley and Milton.
All right.
At this time.
Motion made and seconded to remove, take item number eight out of order, which is the Opera Grant Awards for towns of Wellesley and Milton. All in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Do you have specific language that our dream team has come up with?
I do.
Okay, I think that's my question.
Help the Commissioners along, so the very first Opera Grant Award, Bernoffer County goes to Wellesley, Massachusetts. Wellesley has put forth a request for a water treatment PFOS intermediate plant. Town of Wellesley operates three drinking water plants and the Morse's wastewater treatment plant tested in excess of the mass DEP limit for PFOS chemicals, it was taken offline in May of 2021. The DEP standard is non-negotiable and non-discretionary, and in order to continue to supply adequate supplies of drinking water to Wellesley, they must comply with this rule. This money, 1.5 million dollars, will provide an interim solution to immediately provide carbon and ion exchange technology that consists of a trail mounted tank associated piping to operate filtration system to the south of the existing water treatment building. This first phase will be ordered upon receipt of the funds. The second phase will include permanent carbon filter technology inside the building and will be approved at a later special town meeting in January, I believe, 2022, is that correct? And at this time, this particular award is for the interim solution, so that would be Wellesley's. As I mentioned, it's a considerable amount of money, we've noted Wellesley's interested coming today and I wanted to offer Cheryl Struthers as the onsite representative for Wellesley. We are wiring that money to Wellesley to give it considerable amount of money at stake, so that is the first.
So there's a limit to what we carry, won't we?
Well, reasonably, yes, so for the Commissioners' approval, I would recommend a motion to award 1.5 million dollars to Wellesley in Opera Grant funding at this time.
Dick?
I'll move it.
Second. Motion made and seconded to award 1.5 million dollars to town of Wellesley under the federal Opera Program. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you.
The second and third awards go to the town of Milton. Milton submitted two awards, one for the Harland Street Culvert and Drainage Assessment. This award totals 20.
Eighty thousand eight hundred.
Eighty thousand eight hundred, thank you, Michael. The culvert allows storm water flow underneath the roadway adjacent to Harland Street Jam. It is undersized, antiquated, and contributes to stormwater overtopping of roadway during heavy rainfall, necessitating a multiple day closure until the water is received. This particular award again is the second from sources, so I would offer to the Commissioners the opportunity to place a motion to award 80,800, the town of Milton's Opera Award.
I'll move that the amount of 80,800 dollars be awarded to town Milton for the Opera Award, as noted by the Director.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The, the third item to the town of Milton is 29,000, excuse me, 26,229. This is for a Parks and Recreation Management System software upgrade, known as Civic Rec. Milton writes, the current process for reserving fields and registering for recreational programs is archaic, awkward, and restricting banking hours of our current application unit bank. Our town's website utilizes Civics Plus as a platform, their solution Civic Rec is an available module that would allow Parks and Rec to increase access to online park reservations and program registration. So the Commissioners are so inclined, I would offer a motion to be made for 26,229 to that purpose.
Just quick questions, under the category of broadband improvements?
It's under.
Economic impacts.
Thank you, that's what I wanted, thank you. All right, with that clarification, I'll move the amount of 26,229 dollars for town of Milton.
Second. Motion made and seconded to grant 26,229 dollars to town Milton for software update and recreation, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Hey, we did it. This is, this is the first step and there'll be many more.
There's more, it's like round one, so.
From these same towns, so this is just the first step, so thank you for being part of.
And congratulations for going right at it, because my earlier comments, I talked about how many calls we got when everyone said all this money was coming and then we've set all this up. Everyone's been good, but the calls aren't coming quite as quick now, but we're ready now.
Get a few photos out there with people getting money and suddenly they'll be coming soon.
Well, that's fine.
They will, they'll be like, wait a minute, that's great, that's great.
We.
Because you don't make a recommendation?
It's been exclusively a good process, and I was very worried about it. And when John came, he didn't come here till, he didn't get interviewed till April or May, I think he came on June 14th. And we did say, oh, John, you're a new person and he has terrific background. I said, but you gotta read this real quick, and if this isn't something you're interested in doing, we're worried because we gotta go get someone else. But he didn't and we're very happy about so far how it's going. Knock on wood. Soon as something happens, Quincy will be calling me and saying, you're not doing it right or something, but that's all right. Go ahead, John.
I was gonna make a recommendation for a brief agreement so the photos can be taken. Recession.
Recession. All right, I'll make a motion, you want a recession?
Second.
We can all stand together.
Maybe outside there, yeah.
Okay. Vote to be in a recess, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're gonna be in two-minute recess, don't go away.
Oh, thanks.
We'll scrimline this a little bit.
All right, we good? We all see something?
Mr. Chairman, you're all set.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Nice, that's what, this is the nice part of the job, I like this, this is good.
Again, good afternoon.
All right.
We're back on the record.
And sanitized.
And sanitized, without being in a Norfair County Commission for December 1st. Commissioners, I'd like to direct your attention to item number one on the Commissioners' agenda, which is minutes of open meeting of November 24.
Right, Mr. Chairman, with your pleasure, I'll, I move approval of the Minister of November 24.
Second. All information made and seconded to approve the minutes of November 24th, open meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, number two, public comment. Director.
We have no public comment this time.
No public comment? Anyone on Zoom for public comment? Number three, appointments, I have none. We took care of our appointments under number eight, number four, all business. I have none, number five, two agricultural school personnel matters.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move notice for contingent employment for Justine Grassi of Franklin as a substitute instructor for the rate stated effective November 29, 2021.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of Justine Grassi as a substitute teacher at agricultural school, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, second one.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move with your permission, the notice to transfer from student worker to substitute worker to Scott Schofield of Oxford, Mass. At the rate stated effective November 29, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you. Number six, payroll and expense wise.
All right, we have five, Mr. Chairman, I'll move first. Twenty-two dash twenty-two payroll of the county, 137,234, 59 cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second item, twenty-two dash twenty-two, proceeds 11, payroll of the school in the amount of 328,408, 40 cents.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third item, Mr. Chairman, Walson Recreational Facility Credit. Third item, Mr. Chairman, Walson Recreational Facility credit card payment for December one, two thousand twenty one in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred ninety dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Expense of the county for December first, twenty two, in the amount of forty eight thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars and sixty three cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last one, a new item, for December first, well, one two dash oh one dash two two A expense for the county ARPA in the amount of one hundred seven thousand twenty nine dollars.
Second.
I'm assuming that's for the county.
My question.
Legal fees, that's for the.
Yeah, those are the administrative costs that we've incurred with Clifton Larson.
Okay.
Okay. What's in order? Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Which I would put note saying are well below the benchmark of projected spending that I had estimated. Well, right, so they're trending very favorably.
If I can ask a quick question on that, even if we voted it.
Well, we're.
Because we have, that was also going to be divided up, because now we have, there's Plymouth County, Bristol, us, and then Bonsall in there too?
Yes.
So does that fee reflect the division of four?
Good question.
Yeah, that's, I'm just wondering.
Yep, so it is a good question. There were, initially, as you know, there were three counties.
Right.
The fee does reflect the shared expense to buy by four.
By four.
For costs that are shared between the four counties.
Okay.
So the development of the portal, for example, was a shared cost. However, when I make inquiries, or we have to deal with a Norfolk County-specific task, we're billed directly, but based on the hourly rates of the agreement.
So say the examination of like Wellesley and Wilson, we just had, the vetting of that, was that incurred by us?
Yes.
Was that shared by the four counties?
That's incurred by us.
Okay.
The development of the portal, shared by all four communities, so all four counties.
Okay. All right. All set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so along the same vein, number eight, ARPA grant, oh, sorry, we did number eight. We gave out the money to Wellesley and Milton. We're excited. Number nine. I'm sorry, number seven, report on American Rescue Plan. That's what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Umbrella. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, earlier we awarded our first three ARPA grants to Wellesley and Milton. And as you correctly pointed out, Chairman Shay, the, there are at least one other active award. There's a second one that's in reject status, because I think they need to provide something that's, that'd be built in. But we continue to get active inquiries from a number of communities. We have five communities left that have to request and activate their credentials to use the portal. It seems some counties, some communities are just not in a rush to do it, which is fine, it's their prerogative. But we'll be reaching out to them again to make sure that they try to send information as soon as possible. The, the folks at Clifton Larson, again, I want to sing their praises, they've been great. There are a few things that came out today I wanted to share with the commissioners. They're moving in the direction of building out the diagnostic dashboard for counties to understand where their funds are going to be distributed based on program needs. You asked a question earlier, Commissioner Stady, about what purpose area did the recreational software fit for Milton? That kind of information will be summarized going forward, so that each community, or each county, I should say, will be able to manage and see the disbursement of funds over the next several years. So they've, they've begun the process of developing that. So all systems are go, things are looking pretty good. No hiccups, and I had the pleasure of informing Treasurer O'Brien that Norfolk County was prepared to advance two awards today. He was very happy for us.
I'm surprised he wasn't here. Praising him, though. I did sing his praise.
He has been great.
Oh, yeah.
He's a true supporter, so thank you, sir.
Yeah, we owe, we owe a great debt, both to John Cronin, our director, but also to Plymouth County, because they spearheaded this. They really did.
Yeah. They went through that CARES Act, and I felt them agree.
Oh, I think it.
I mean, it was funny, because there weren't a lot of criticism, and, you know, at the time, I remember, but they.
Peter remembers best.
Yeah, they came out on top, and.
Yeah.
And it, and it helped out with the opera, obviously, so definitely we want.
Well, I think when you get on this road, you feel a lot better after the first one, that's. Especially as it, that's what I talked about, because that's how I feel.
More to come. Be more exciting.
Okay. Do we need to get Nancy in here for bid opening? I'm sorry, a lot from the time.
We were scheduled for one thirty. Could allow me one second to check with her, because she gave me a message.
She is.
Nancy, how we doing? I apologize for.
Being late.
Losing your time at one thirty, but I think we can go right to the bid opening.
I was trying to find the things to do.
That's all right.
This is printing for the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds for a period of one year with a one-year option to renew. We have one bid. Three did go out. From printing, Holbrook, they've been a long time center for registries.
They've been around, and we certainly know them. They do some work for us, too.
They have bid on all items. This too many trade.
All right, so we can take it under advisement next week.
Yes, and this will go over to. Bobby for mother.
This is something we can keep moving right along, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How about a motion, David, under advisement?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We take the matter of the printing at Directory of Deeds for two-year period under advisement to be awarded at a later date. Number ten, contract awards. We have none today. Number eleven, in your, in your packet, Commissioners, is the October trial balance figures for approval.
Brief, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioners, last week, we presented to you the September trial balance at the time that October one was not quite ready. The county treasurer has advanced this for your consideration this afternoon. There is nothing in here that I found unusual or concerning.
Okay. So we need a vote to accept this?
I'd move the acceptance of the trial balance. I believe the, the amount, tell me if I'm wrong, but I have here eighty four million, eight hundred forty three thousand, five hundred eighty nine dollars, ninety one cents.
So I think that's correct.
Correct. Ten thirty one.
Yeah.
And that must include the ARPA funds, correct?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the October thirty first trial balance as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. BJA grant awards. I'm, I'm losing track. I would go from never giving out any money to, this is good. Explain briefly this program.
Oh, that's right. That goes back.
Well, it was last year, but we had to.
Okay.
Now we're in a hurry to get it done, because this is timeframe only, but I think we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Yes.
So Commissioners, last week I informed you that we had successfully received the funding associated with Bureau of Justice grant award that was given, awarded to the county about a year ago. Over the last year, there've been a lot of challenges to download the funds and have them received. They are now received. We have two months, a little over two months now, to expend the funds. As a reminder, you took a vote last year to award funds totaling twenty four thousand fifty three dollars. Actually, I might have that wrong. It's above thirty three thousand dollars. Eight thousand four hundred and fifty three was for the Walpole Fire Department. Fourteen thousand five oh two was for the Dove Organization, and eleven thousand dollars even was for Manette. The balance of the fifty, fifty five thousand dollar grant, if I am correctly correct, was for county, county use to combat the coronavirus impacts on our operations. This afternoon, what I'd like to do is to offer you the opportunity to take that balance of twenty four thousand fifty three dollars, which was envisioned for county use, and reassign it to any of these three award individual grant awards to expend the funds before the end of January. We have expended effectively all of our CARES impact funds through the State CARES Act, if we've been made whole, if you will. Well, I do not have any existing obligations or needs for twenty four thousand dollars worth of CARES impact. So if it's to your liking, we have contacted each of the grant awardees, specifically Dove and Manette, who are healthcare organizations, as you know, that provide varieties of different services, to find out, could they use additional funds associated with the scope of the war that was originally given to them? And they most certainly said they could. So, well, I, I wanted to give you all the opportunity to revisit your, your particular vote a year ago to expand the grants into these areas for the full benefit of the use, which is consistent with the purpose of the grant. That's important, because I don't, I don't want to deviate and award funds from this grant at this time with two months to go to any new organization that might require additional financial.
We've opened the door to look at other things and apply for other monies, right?
Always.
Yeah, always, okay.
I thought, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I thought Randolph was receiving some of that money, too. Or was it a different social?
They were not awarded. They did not, they may have competed.
Okay.
Commissioner, but they were not.
They got some money on a community health nurse with Avon, right, that we were involved in.
I remember there was a discussion about police.
Billy has, Billy has the answer.
Bill, Bill, please.
Randolph received the burn grants, which is a whole, is a third pile of federal money. That's for.
Okay.
Crime reduction.
Thank you.
Randolph perceived it with Quincy and Waymouth.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Different grant. Okay. My bad. That's all right. So what, are you suggesting that we take the remaining money and divide it between Dove and Manette?
For the same purpose?
Because.
Well, they're all certainly worthy, and, and they're, they're in keeping with our promise to pass this money through. Certainly. Gulf will fight about it goes without saying. Dove's work in this last year and a half, Peter knows better than I do, and I know DA Marcy knows.
Yeah.
The grant.
Manette.
Manette has been huge. I mean, if you leave here today and go to Manette, you can get a boost of this afternoon.
Correct.
In Quincy.
Not today.
Not today. And there's no, it's not the, it's not the. You know, if you have your God, they just, they just take everyone. They're terrific.
Wow.
And then they don't have to be from Quincy or anywhere else, but they're generally from the South Shore and Norfolk County, so. Without, I mean, whatever, however you want to do it, but like, we want to be sure they, we get everything done, so they can get it spent by the end.
Did you hear back from Walpole?
We did. Walpole's was more of a one-time, non-programmatic expense. I believe they were looking for funding to assist with the continued operation of the station at the time, which has been already fulfilled.
So why don't we do it fifty fifty then? Divide it between Dove and Manette. Which Director Cronin is indicating that might be the way to go.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move that.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Take your minute twenty four thousand, divide it between Dove and Manette.
Motion made and seconded to take the remaining twenty four thousand about our BJA grant awards and divide it between Dove and Manette. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, you, the communication's open, so they know the timeframe.
Right, I'll prepare letters to both organizations, so that they understand what's ahead of them.
Number thirteen, review and vote to authorize Norfolk County Commission Chair to acknowledge receipt of and certify the filing of mass DOT layout alteration number eight eight three two plans notification and written instrument in the Norfolk County Commission records. Commissioners, we have a memorandum dated the twenty third from our county surveyor, Patrick Higgins, relative to all this, and explains how you are going to take this vote to empower the chair to sign off for us. This is the standard procedure. We do have Patrick check everything out as we go along. I'm not sure. I know he's probably on the cloud, but are we all set on this, Patrick?
Yeah, yes, you are, Chairman Shay. All set.
Okay. So if you have any questions, but I'd like to get it off my desk, and it's pretty timely, because we, we only got it November first, and somebody's laying around. Now we're right on top of the cats, keeping us right in the loop there. So I'm happy to entertain a motion. And the exact terminology is.
Right, is your exact?
Review and vote to authorize Chairman to sign and include attestation page.
Right. I'd make that motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded to empower the chairman to sign the attestation page for a mass Department of Transportation Right-of-Way Bureau issue in the town of Bellingham. All in favor?
Aye.
I will sign it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pat. Next. Request from the Irish Pastoral Center. Chair to acknowledge receipt, and I'm sorry, to get the civic rate for September twenty two golf tournament at President's Golf Course. I did distribute their newsletter, which is voluminous and very, very well done. We've been associated with them before, and they've worked with us on other issues. I believe this is a separate entity from the Canton group, although they, they won't refer to each other anymore, so.
Yes, I know. I didn't see that. Did they give it out to us?
I thought I did.
Okay, no. Is that the same as the Irish Cultural Center, or is that a?
I don't believe it is.
Okay.
However, they certainly all work together and everything. It's, yeah.
I, I believe I have the mail-in for you in my office.
Okay. It's a doctor's group, but they've been with us before.
Now, they have, have you got this before?
They raised money, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so I thought it was the first time. All right, I'll move that we grant to the Irish Pastoral Center, IPC of Boston, the rate given for scholarship from nonprofit organizations.
The discounted rate.
Right, that's the rate, discounted rate for nonprofit group.
Second.
That what they're looking for?
Motion made and seconded.
Something wrong with it?
For the event to be held in twenty twenty two. They didn't offer a date, but they're planning.
I got it. It's September. It's in September?
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two. It's sponsored by the Kelly Family of Milton for the organization, the memory of Mrs. Kelly, and the money goes to a scholarship to B C High. And they've received a rate in the past. I'm very happy. Father Dan Finn, Galvin, the doctor's. Okay, motion made and seconded to grant the charity rate to Irish Pastoral Center Golf Tournament, September twenty two. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll send them a note. Number fifteen, report of COVID nineteen response.
I have nothing to do with this, Commissioner.
Okay, I, at the risk of. I, I, I'm just, I'm just hearing more about COVID in the last few weeks, and I've heard in six months, so that's the bad news, it seems to be. So if we have no COVID reports, that's a good thing, because.
That's true.
Okay.
The new variant shows a concern.
Certainly is, yeah. Number sixteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this week, I was contacted by the Attorney General's Office. They have offered municipalities within Massachusetts the opportunity to apply for portion of the settlement that Johnson or J and J, as it's called, is providing to states across the country as a result of the opioid epidemic. The settlement is, I asked, and it was confirmed that counties are eligible for a portion of this settlement. Before this meeting, I received a call from Gillian Finer, from, I believe she's an Assistant Attorney General, who wanted to follow up with me to size up the county's interest in this, and I said, I believe there will be interest. She did confirm that any receipt of funds must be used for the purposes of combating opioid abuse. And she did not have any estimate of cost that may be coming the county's way. It would be based upon a metric that was established by lawyers associated with the settlement agreement. It does take into account population and other factors, including opioid case abuse within the defined areas. So with your approval this afternoon, I would work with Attorney Scott Lopez to prepare a request for a grant associated with this settlement. The applications, I believe, are due within the next two to three weeks.
My question, so, sounds good. Is this a settlement that was intended to be given out to state and county entities, or also could local towns also apply?
It's actually given to the state for local and county applications. Gillian mentioned, Commissioner Stady, that the more communities apply, the more money the state will receive. So I believe it's drawn from that, that, that exact thought.
If a local town had like a subsidy, they'd be applying for something like that. So we wouldn't be taking money from them.
No, sir.
Okay, I don't want to hurt them, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. That sounds good. The more we can do to help combat the opioid crisis, the better.
Absolutely.
So we'd be simply making applications. We learn something that's inconsistent with the county's, you know, long-term plans, I'll report back, but it does seem to be a purposeful area that, you know, for regional application, we could possibly make a difference, so.
Would that be something, too, that we can maybe utilize within our own county for perhaps employees who are dealing with those problems as well?
We'll have to see programmatically where it reaches, whether it's on that level or if it's directly for program.
All right, one last question. We had a young person, a lady who came and spoke to us. Were you thinking that, Mr. Chairman?
Well, she said.
Right. Could that be something?
That, I just had to go through that, it's voluminous, it should really, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Which I knew anyway.
Right, right.
But the.
But could we tie in something with her on that?
Quite likely, yeah, I thought the same thing.
You know.
Same space.
And your question, it's a question of my part, and in my experience here, which is short, we have a service on call, correct, for our employees if we need to refer someone to.
We do have, I believe we do.
Our can be anything, I guess, right? We have, we're with all the connection, okay, through personnel.
I believe we do.
Okay, all right.
All right, good, thank you. All right, so do you need a motion from?
I will take a motion, so that would allow me to make application with Scott's assistance. Um, we will need legal help for uh this application.
Move, Mr. Chairman, that we allow the county director to work with our counsel Lopez in uh organizing and drafting and facilitating the grant application for the use of some of funds to be used to combat opioid crisis as a result of a settlement with Johnson and Johnson.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, commissioners, the next item.
Report of the county director.
We were notified, I was notified, I received an email uh from the Executive Office of Technology uh and Security, state level. They are offering free cybersecurity training to municipalities and counties. Um, I had our IT director, Mark McDonald, reach out to uh the executive office to learn more about this opportunity. Mark has um secured um some information relative to the application, the program, has determined it would be an excellent tool for um county government to engage in. Um, I asked Mark to extend the invitation to the agricultural school and the registry deeds to extend the scope of applicable training. Uh, the agricultural school is very interested in um joining in on this training opportunity. The registry wrote back that they had previously received uh cybersecurity training. Mark told me today that training was held in two thousand seventeen, kind of four years ago, but we're we're going to circle back with the registry to see if they might be more interested in a more relevant or contemporary training.
Sure.
This training's interesting because I happen to know about it, my my local community did the training last year. And and it allows um communities to have uh desktop training for every individual um to go at your own speed, to learn about um cybersecurity, the threats that can um undermine uh systems integrity um with improper use of tools and so forth, so. Um, in addition, it will help people like Mark or people that handle IT infrastructures to make sure they have um the proper software programs and techniques and skills um to push back and protect your infrastructure from any any threats. Um, the executive office technology promotes these opportunities. Uh, they feel as though the training op offers everybody the same opportunity to learn something and gain contemporary understanding of how to protect your infrastructure, so. Uh, with your approval, I will proceed with um making the application with or without the registry's interest, but at this point, we're trying to include as many participants in Norfolk County as possible.
Does this be of any assistance to the golf course?
Possibly, they would be part of our scope, they fall under our.
Under market.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me, sounds great, yeah.
Could I get a vote on that, if you don't mind, because we'll be making an application for that.
So move that the county director be uh allowed to advance the idea of uh facilitating in attending uh information relative to cybersecurity attacks?
Cybersecurity training.
Comes your training.
Technology.
Okay, and working with the county Aggie School as well on this program.
And possibly the registry.
And plus the registry deeds.
Yeah, I'll report back.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Okay, second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Um, next, um, a week from today, I believe it's at six or six-thirty, I can't remember the holiday direct date, we will be having a finance committee meeting in preparation, I'm sorry, December eighth, excuse me.
December eighth, yeah.
Yes, uh, we'll be having a finance committee meeting in preparation for the following week's advisory board meeting. Uh, yesterday, Assistant Director Buckley and I had a pre-meeting with uh Dr. Childs to go over uh preliminarily some of the agenda items that they may be faced with. Um, currently, I will let you know, the supplemental is looking very, very modest, um, I believe it will be under two hundred thousand dollars. I haven't figured out the total cost yet, but things are trending at a very modest level. Uh, we'll have a handful of transfers also to address.
But we'll see them the week before.
You will probably see them a week from today.
Yeah, okay.
Before the finance committee meets.
I can wait.
A week from today, uh, I believe it's at six to six-thirty.
The advisory board meeting is what day?
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth, and is that going to be live or in person, or have we, do we decide?
We are, we are waiting for the chairman to notify us of his choice.
Okay.
He just confirmed the date this time.
Okay, all right, so we don't know yet.
And the finance committee meeting is virtual?
It is.
Okay. I thought we had an Aggie meeting that day, too, I thought. Remember Ed said we need to have a meeting, we didn't want to have a December meeting, we may have to. So I thought we were going to have one, I thought, but.
I think we may have just had it today.
Oh, okay. Okay. Hopefully, that'd be kind of be great, okay, that'd be great, okay. Sounds good.
The last item I have, Mr. Chairman, uh, is relative to some work that's coming together. Um, as you know, our FY twenty audit has been going on since, I believe, February. Um, the firm Lynch Marini is concluding their work. They had a couple of items they wanted some clarification from the county on. Uh, one of the items, I asked attorney Scott Lopez to prepare an opinion on, he delivered it, I delivered it to Lynch Marini last night. Um, I'm asking Lynch Marini to have their uh audit prepared and ready um in time for us to share with Hilltop Securities, who, as you know, are working with the county on the school bond. We have to begin the scheduled uh process of application for that bond starting December fifteenth. So uh things are kind of coming together to to some extent in a in a um fortuitous way, but it's going to be very tight because the the bond rating agencies will require an FY twenty audit to give us favorable rates, so. Uh, hopefully, we'll have an audit to uh share with them within the next couple of weeks. Um, and um I'll report, obviously, to you folks on the findings or content of those of that audit when it when it does surfaces. And as a reminder, they'll move directly and purposely into FY twenty-one at the conclusion of this process, uh, so we can play catch-up. That is all I have at this time.
So if I could, yeah, follow up on that, so that's a big one. So we're we're still behind as far as the audit, and we went over this, the reasons why, correct?
Correct.
Um, that opinion that Scott Lopez, our attorney Lopez will be writing is a critical one in terms of some of the interpretations of things, right?
It was, yes.
Okay.
He did a masterful job, by the way.
Okay, so we'll see what happens on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're not quite sure, then we'll have the audit ready, because it depends on how they respond to that, right?
Correct.
Am I honest, right?
Yeah, I, yes, you're right, I would.
Okay, just saying, okay. All right, so assuming it goes okay, we'll wrap it up, get the audit done, and then we move forward, right?
Correct.
Okay. Not, what is that plan?
Well, it will happen, uh, the question is, in what form will the audit be? Will it be final, will it be draft, will it be in phase? Um, it depends, um, I have no problem sharing a draft audit with our securities department, uh, securities partner, rather, um, to advance the schedule. The schedule's going to take us into January. Uh, in fact, I just told Bill yesterday to uh book a date in January uh for your agenda because you'll need to sign off on all those documents, it'll take about four weeks to prepare everything. So there's sufficient flexibility within the schedule to address any audit issues, but to begin with, I think a draft audit may be sufficient to be in the process.
All right, one last question, it's a big one, though. I know when I first took office, the audit when it first came out cited a couple of things they were concerned about with the registry and the treasurer in terms of certain things, has that been addressed? Or is that being talked about in terms of?
Ongoing, I know.
It's ongoing.
The treasurer's had someone look at it.
Okay.
Waiting for report, it's always a subject of discussion, he comes up with another audit firm.
But that's.
I I suspect.
But I don't know if it's in there.
Is that going to be in this audit here, or are we going to be?
Conceptually, it conceptually it could, because we have to remember the audit's timestamp is FY twenty for a period of.
That's true.
June, right, July one nineteen to June thirty of twenty, so.
You're right.
They're examining activities during that time.
That's true, you're right, I keep forgetting that.
And and as Mark Abraham reported out when he uh when he was with us a couple of months ago, the county is likely to endure one or two other rounds of audit findings that were reminiscent of the ones that we've had for the last several years.
Right.
The the changes and reforms that you all have put in place in the last six months or so will be reflective in the FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three audits to come, so.
That's right.
That's the emotion, right? Okay, okay.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, that is all I have.
Thank you. Number eight, seventeen. Topics that you added not originally anticipated, I have four, which is a lot. They're very mo, very interesting and they're pretty straightforward. I don't know where to start, I do I bring your attention to uh that our December, our November, December, twenty-twenty-one uh Norfolk County RSVP annual uh newsletter, so to speak, is some interesting tidbits, I talked to Robert earlier today. Uh, we're in the middle of our uh holiday drive supporting our active-duty military people. Um, there's a couple of other reports here, there's some pictures from the O'Brien's phone dedication, and there's a story in here about uh an RSVP volunteer from Quincy who drives veterans. It's pretty interesting, pretty straightforward, I want to draw attention to that. I received a letter from Quincy Community Action Program about their twenty-twenty-one annual drive. We're very familiar with the community action all over the county. I referred to Quincy folks to Mayor Coke and his federal team that he's put together to apply for some money, so we may hear from them again through that avenue, which we'd be happy to entertain if we hear from them. I have received uh some pictures from Director Mullin that I'm going to share with you about the work being done at the court, at the Superior Court that John McAllen took this week because we're going on to summer, winter recess, they can't work up in the winter. These are very, very interesting to see the detail of the removal work going on there.
Yeah.
The restoration, so.
They're great photos.
We're going to keep them.
So Alson, Alson Corporation has completed the work um for the season, and in order to secure the site, I asked John to go over to make sure it's safe in addition to what.
And they will be back in March or April?
Yes, sir, that's right, when the weather permits, but those pictures um that were taken.
Thousand words.
Exquisite, we tried to explain what Bill and I saw a couple of months ago when we were on the route, but they, that's exactly it.
You know, I'm willing to go up in a roof with you, Commissioner.
Let's do it.
In the spring, in the spring.
In the spring, not now, not now. Uh, that was, remember we said, there was a gentleman in Denham, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, he said he wanted as a fundraiser, uh, if we had some kind of a way to get people on a certain day in Denham to to go up and look at the roof, but you said maybe we could do it virtually?
Yeah.
Is that something we could pursue in the spring, too?
Sure.
Virtual, maybe.
Yeah.
Because this is great stuff.
Yeah, we actually talked to Leon Goodwin about that when we met with him last week, um, in Denham.
Wow.
Trying to gather interest in the spring.
Okay.
Great pictures. Commissioner, just in the way, I gave you a copy of the email that describes the opioid um settlement piece, okay?
And lastly, in your mail today, because I opened it, I opened mine, and I think it's the same for you. We received a interesting document, I haven't really had time to read it, the coming U.S. economic miracle on the New Silk Road. This has been sent to each of us as commissioners, singly and used. This is from the Linden LaRouche Organization. Uh, but it's timely and dated, again, I haven't digested it, but I'd be happy to share it with anyone, I just want to note that we didn't receive it. And I have nothing else. I hope everyone had a good holiday, we have a full meeting next week on the eighth.
Hmm.
And then we're in preparation for our advisory board meetings in December.
Right.